Good evening and welcome to the July 10, 2024 Regular Planning Commission meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and we have a quorum. All seven members are present. First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Tristan Carroll, our newest Planning Commission member who was recently appointed by City Council and the mayor. And this is his first meeting, so we'd like to welcome him and thank him for serving on the Planning Commission.
Yeah, thank you guys for allowing me to serve. Looking forward to it.
Same here.
Welcome.
We, Ms. Jacob, we do not have any public comments. So, and just to clarify for anybody who might be in the audience, the public comments is different from the public hearing portion of our agenda. The public comments is a separate section of the agenda where people sign up to speak in advance, but that does not preclude anybody from speaking during the actual advertised public hearings. So, the reason I am up here, I'm Matthew Blomley, the Assistant Planning Director, is because our rules of procedure require that the first meeting in July of every year, the Planning Commission hold elections for officers. And the two officers that are prescribed by our rules of procedure are the Chair and the Vice Chair. So, our first order of business tonight will be for the election of the Chair for the 2024-2025 year. And so, I'd entertain motions for Chair for this year.
Motion to nominate Kathy Jones as Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob, please call the roll.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Say aye, say it.
All right, we have a Chair for the 2024-2025 year. Congratulations, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Now, we would entertain a motion for Vice Chair for the 2024-2025 year.
Motion to nominate Mr. Ken Halliburton?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Sorry, Ken.
Ms. Jacob, please call the roll.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Can you vote for yourself? I'll abstain.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you, and I will gladly turn this Chair over to Chair Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley.
Ms. Jacob, if you wouldn't mind moving Ms. Jones' nameplate over here.
Can I make sure I get Sean right?
Sure.
Thank you.
As you can tell, I'm not used to being in this seat.
Matthew, you can move back to your regular scheduled seat now.
Thank you, Sean.
I feel much more comfortable in this one.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so, our next item of business tonight is to approve minutes of the June 13, 2024, and June 19, 2024 Planning Commission meetings. We've had a chance to review those ahead of time, so if anybody have any additions or corrections, and if not, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
All right, next we have our public hearings and recommendations to council. We have one item there tonight, and it is a zoning application for approximately 0.57 acres located along East Vine Street to be rezoned from RSA and CCO to PRD and CCO. It's the enclave at Vine Street, PRD. Big Red Holdings LLC is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good evening.
Good evening, Chair Jones. Congratulations on another term.
Thank you.
As you can see on the overhead, the project site is located on the south side of Vine Street in between South University Street and Gale. The existing property is zoned RSA with an existing PRD due west of the property, as well as one other one further to the west denoted as PRD that was approved as well with a six-unit subdivision, excuse me, five-unit subdivision, and a six-unit directly adjacent. These particular property sites, the one being proposed, contains a unit in the front, that's a duplex unit, with an identical one towards the back with a central open space area between the two. As you can see on this map here, the existing zoning shows again those two PRDs that are adjacent, which are higher densities with 7.81 and 8.45 units to the acre versus the 7.07 proposed. In looking at our future land use plan for this area, it is not in the North Highlands, but it is located in what we call the mixed form housing district. That's the district that generally is consistent with RSA, all the way up to PRD and RSA districts. So, what they are proposing, we use the comparative district of the RSA District Type 2. So, the existing site contains this single-family house of about 1920s that will be, excuse me, 1900s that's scheduled to be demolished to make room for the property site. And then the site layout, you may recall when you saw some preliminary ones, it had two, three-car garages, so it has been modified so that the garage would serve one car garage for each of the units. The other thing that Planning Commission had questions on, and I've highlighted in your staff report, was what was the adjacent landscaping on this property here to the west? And that is currently a Type A 10-foot buffer all the way down that property line. And the last question you had was whether or not, how could those car garages be part of the unit that it's sold with? And so, they have added some provisions in their Plan Development Book that they will write their HOA and their documents such that they could never sell those separate from the unit, so each unit would have one assigned garage. And so, those are the high points from last meeting, the items that you had questions on. And then the applicant's engineer is here to go over more specifically some of the details as far as the exceptions being requested for this particular property.
Chairman Jones, congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
And Tristan, nice to meet you. My name is Brian Grover. I'm from SEC. I'm here representing Paul and Jessica Seagurt. They are unfortunately out of country at this time, but they wish for me to convey their gratitude for you guys taking the time to consider their proposal of the enclave at Vine Street. As stated, the project is located at 542 East Vine Street, just about five blocks or so east of the square in downtown Murfreesboro. As it sits today, the site has a duplex site existing on-site. It is zoned RSA. This would be requesting a rezoning to PRD/CCO. And the proposed product for this does match the future land use plan following that mixed form housing as highly stated. What kind of, these are the same photos that she was showing you before, but this is just the existing houses. It's from the front, and this is the rear photo there with the vacant property to the east. And this is looking down East Vine Street. You can see to the west or to the left of that picture there, the existing PRD development, and this is a view of the front of that. So, this is something that has been developing along that street already. Where we left off last time in our conversations, there was some concern about the distribution of parking when it came to the surface and the garages on-site. Took those concerns and discussed with the client, and one of the, I don't know what happened there. Go back. The solution we came up with was a four-car garage unit. This would provide four interior garage spaces, one for each unit, and then four spaces to the north of that and four to the south. This would actually reduce the total amount of surface parking that would be seen from the road with this layout, and then would provide each unit with two surface spaces while still maintaining that central open space. And the duplex units themselves had no change from the prior meeting. This is that distribution of parking. You can see that Unit 1 and 2 are on the first four surface parking spaces with Unit 3 and 4 on the south side, with each unit having one space in the middle while still having those guest spaces near the central open space. We did add extra provisions to the PRD when it came to the development standards. The surface and garage spaces would be assigned to a unit, and at no time will the garage assigned to the duplex be sold, or can it be leased separately from the unit itself. I believe Commissioner Sean has some concern about someone leasing out their garage after they bought it. This would prevent that from happening to ensure that this would be used as intended. The architecture remained the same as you saw from before. This is a view of that front of the home with that nice large porch and a similar porch on the rear of the units that would be facing each other towards that central courtyard. This would be seen from the western property, just the typical side elevation of that, and then from the private drive. The garages, as I said before, garage, sorry, were from the two threes to the four. So, the elevations for that would remain the same other than the fact that it would be a longer structure. In discussion with staff, one thing that has not been added but will be added to this is that there would be windows in those decorative garage doors as typically required when these type of developments are proposed. It's just a rear elevation there. Access is just from East Vine Street via shared private drive. And the landscaping on the site, as stated before, there is some exceptions being requested with this, primarily along the east side as long as the west. However, to help mitigate the impact on the surrounding area and help create a strong delineation from this development and the surrounding neighbors, a six-foot-tall proposed PVC privacy fence is proposed along the south and kind of southeast corner that connects to the garage. And then, that would continue towards East Vine Street as a four-foot-tall garage. That way, we could still screen the headlights from any type of parking that would be up there, but not necessarily hide or create obstruction views of anyone from the street to that private drive. Open space is not, open space and formal space is not required with this type of development. However, private open space is in the amount of 50 square feet a unit. However, because of the opportunities we had with the size of this lot, we wanted to ensure that there was a future opportunity for residents to utilize the central open spaces they saw fit and provide an example, but not necessarily require the type of amenities that they could utilize within that space upon agreement with each other and HOA approval. The summary of requested exceptions, if you can see here, the boxes correspond to the colors on the proposed plan here. The first exception was simply requesting that the total amount of porch is allowed to impact a facade would be increased from 50% to 70%. This is just a rule in the CCO. And that applies to the rear part of these units. Because we have the build-to-line at 15 feet with the porch out of that, it would only affect the rear unit's rear porch. And this is simply because these units are providing a much larger porch with the colonnades and the pillars and everything else. The, another exception is allowing that modified planting area along the eastern portion of the property in lieu of the Type D buffer for that area. This request comes because of the site constraints in terms of how small the site was. However, we do believe that with the addition of this fence and the fact we have a structure there, that it would still perform the same, if not a little bit better, than the Type D buffer. And then, we're requesting eliminate the basic building plantings on the west side. A lot of that's because we're going to have some utilities coming to that side to get remaining units in the rear of the property. And we're also requesting to eliminate the perimeter plantings on the west and south side in lieu of the layout shown in the program book. This is to try and keep a lot of that landscaping that would normally be spread out more centralized towards that central open space and provide a more unique and introverted experience for the users of the site. Overall, I think this is a great match for the CCO. The two products that have already developed to the west of this, both have very similar standards that were approved. And the architecture with these buildings that makes it look almost a little more unique compared to the other two is they're definitely more single-family housing aesthetic to them as compared to the other ones, which is an important factor when it comes to the CCO. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those now or after the public hearing.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, before we open the public hearing?
I missed the workshop on this. What's the required parking? Oh, I just found it. Thank you.
Okay.
Three, okay.
Any questions, Ms. Ava Water?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We will open the public hearing, ask if we have anybody that would like to come forward to speak. Probably won't go through my whole long list of requirements, but if there's anybody here that would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, make all your comments to the Planning Commission. And seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for any other questions or comments regarding this application before we're ready for a vote.
I appreciate all the work done with the garages. The, I didn't like the last plans garages at all. This is a lot better. Thank you.
Much better. I'm sure all the future buyers will be much happier with this as well. I think that was a good, good change.
I think there's a discrepancy on the parking. It says you have six surface spaces on the plan book, but you actually have eight. And it says six garage spaces, but you have four.
Six was the whole garage spaces.
That was, so it's not updated.
That might have been updated. We'll get that fixed. And what it's supposed to be, it will be four garage spaces and eight surface, so there's still 12 total spaces.
There's still 12.
With two additional guest spaces.
Two guest spaces.
There are no other questions. I'll move for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and many seconds, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Our next item is for public hearings. We have one item there, and it is a street renaming request to rename a segment of Butler Drive north of Joby Jackson Parkway to Kenny Pipe Court. City of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening once again to Planning Commission. Our second public hearing tonight is for the renaming of an approximately 3,000, 3,300-foot-long segment of Butler Drive. This is directly to the north of Joby Jackson Parkway. This segment of Butler Drive is going to be disconnected from the realigned Butler Drive. So, back in around 2000, when the Joby Jackson Parkway interchange was built, Butler Drive was, was realigned at that time to avoid the interstate off-ramp. It was realigned at a less-than-ideal location from the on-ramp. It's so close to the on-ramp that there is no possibility at its current location of that intersection ever being signalized. So, the city is undertaking a road construction project presently, it's under construction right now, to realign Butler Drive from its current location further to the west along Joby Jackson Parkway, so that intersection can be signalized at some point in the future. You can see the outline of the new roadway on the map before you, and the existing roadway is in blue. The new roadway, the new realigned Butler Drive is scheduled to be completed no later than February of 2025. Sometime before that point, we expect the realignment of Elam Road to be complete because the realignment of Elam Road must be complete prior to Buc-E's going vertical. So, Buc-E's is working, Buc-E's contractor, not the city, is working on the realignment of Elam Road, which will have to happen before they start building the private elements on that site. So, as I mentioned, at some point in the future, we would expect that intersection to be signalized, but we don't know exactly when just yet. So, that leaves a 3,300 linear foot segment of Butler Drive that will actually tee in to the new, to the new realigned Butler Drive. And so, because they will be two different streets intersecting at a T-intersection, a, the, the remnant section of Butler Drive needs to be renamed. So, we've looked at this segment. We've looked at who all would be affected. There are six addresses that would be affected by this renaming. Kenny Pipe and Supply, who built a 104,000-square-foot facility along this segment. There's a daycare center right in front of Kenny Pipe and Supply, and then there are four single-family homes along this segment. So, there are a total of six addresses that would need to be changed with the renaming of this road. So, City Administration has recommended that we recommend to the Planning Commission the street name of Kenny Pipe Court. As I mentioned, Kenny Pipe and Supply, which is a Nashville-based plumbing supply company, in 2019 built 104,000-square-foot facility on this segment of, of Butler Drive. They have locations in Tennessee, Alabama, and Georgia. And so, Administration has recommended that we bring the proposed street name of Kenny Pipe Court to you for consideration. We have, we have verified with E911 that it does not find, that it does not object to this street name. Whenever we have a new street name, whether that's the city, a street that the city is constructing, or whether that's a private developer, we require that any new street name go before E911 to make sure that it doesn't duplicate or sound too close phonetically to an existing street name. So, E911 has recommended approval of Kenny Pipe Court. While it's not codified anywhere, we do require a public hearing for any type of street name change prior to, prior to a vote being taken. And the Planning Commission, per the subdivision regulations, has the authority over street naming within the city of Murfreesboro. So, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight and then consider the, the street renaming. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have before or after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blomley. Any questions?
I'll stay quiet.
Okay. We'll see. All right, we'll open the public hearing and ask if we have anybody that would like to come forward to speak regarding this street renaming. And seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Ask for any other comments or questions and/or motions.
What about just Kenny Drive?
So, there was a list of about 10 or 12 street names that Administration asked me to run by E911. E911 recommended denial of, of Kenny Court because of a street that it deemed that was too close phonetically to, to Kenny.
Had to ask. I'll make a motion we approve. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Next, we have staff reports and other business. And we do have one item there tonight. We have a mandatory referral for the dedication of an MTE electric easement on city-owned property at 324 New Salem Highway. City Administration Department is the applicant. Mr. Hankins?
Good evening, Chair Jones.
Good evening.
Yes, this mandatory referral is for an underground electric easement for Middle Tennessee at the New Transit Center located on Bridge Avenue. There is an exhibit that's in your agenda materials that shows the extent of the easement. This is going to supply power to, I think, the new, both the new Transit Center building and the accessory buildings that they have in the back. So, I'm available for any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. Yes, Mr. Blomley, you have some more staff reports for us, don't you?
Yes, ma'am. I have a, I have a good one for you tonight.
Yes.
So, we have an introduction to make. We have a new planner on board who started on Monday, Sloane Lewis, a recent graduate of Miami University of Ohio in planning. And she's originally from eastern Ohio, correct?
Yeah.
And so, we're really excited to have her on board. This will be the first time that we've had a full staff since November. And we're excited to have her. She's, she's working under the tutelage of Mr. Aguilara back there, so.
Oh, wow.
Make sure to.
A laugh a minute, right?
Good luck.
Yeah.
Does he mention anything about food trucks?
But, but y'all will be seeing her before the Planning Commission, and, and we welcome her to our department.
Welcome. Thank you. Nice to meet you all. I'm excited to get started.
Welcome. We're so glad you're here. I know they're thrilled to have full staff again, so thank you.
Welcome to SEC country.
Okay, and did we have any other business tonight, staff reports?
Not that I have. Nothing more from this side.
Okay. If not, then we stand adjourned. Okay. If not, then we stand adjourned.